Well, thanks for taking some time to learn more about the Fly Erie Fund we're putting together and really try to contextualize the situation at the airport. So I've done this presentation enough. There are about 30 slides, but I'm going to move through it as quickly as possible. But we really, and you can go to the first slide. So the first piece of information is that we didn't just come up with something. We knew that we needed to do something from the private and public sector to support more air service at the airport, but we also knew that neither the public or private sector was going to put any money in if we didn't look at the numbers pretty intensely to make sure we knew what was going on out there. So we looked at their financials, and when I say looked, we went through them and probably 15 or 20 line items that I went through. I wanted to know for sure what's included in this, how do you calculate it, what's involved with it? And we looked at past reports, articles, we talked with airline consultants, professionals, business leaders, we talked to people in other parts of the country who do these types of funds, how they're set up, how they're governed, et cetera. So we went into this, we weren't just interested in getting a flight reinstituted at the airport. Candidly, both, I think, the public and private sectors' hands have been off the wheel relative to the airport, right? We just kind of assumed, oh, well, they'll take care of business, and we can't go that way going forward. So this was really, we got into it saying, we don't really want to solve something for the short term, we want to solve it for the long term, and really stay involved with it and drive it to where it can be. So you can go to the next slide. I think the first thing is, is that a lot of us in the community think that we're entitled to air service, and we're not. We have an airport, we built an airport, and that's, and that's what you'd call the, you know, the Erie Municipal Airport Authority's the fixed-based operator of that airport, and then airlines contract with you, but they don't have to contract with you. You have to make a compelling argument for them to come here and service your market. And so we need to understand that using that airport and running it efficiently and effectively is important to getting those airlines to come here. And as I kind of alluded to, we all have to be more involved in the process. There is an authority governing the airport, but we have to provide them with input, we have to provide them with direction, we have to ask them questions when we don't see things going in the correct direction. Go ahead. So what do we do know about what's going on at the national level? Pilot mechanics, air traffic controllers are radically behind where they need to be. And so that's affecting flight economics and route dynamics. And so the airports have a staffing issue, they have a staff, they have increased costs, obviously fuel being one, but also parts, aircraft staffing, because they're tight, they've had to elevate wages across the board. And what we're seeing across the country is that there's fewer departures everywhere, but they're flying bigger planes. And so there may be more seats available, but there's fewer departures. And they're doing that because when you have fewer staff, when you, you want to deploy your pilots and your crews and your planes where you can make the most money. That's the cold hearted reality of what they're doing, and so if they have fewer pilots, they want that pilot flying a 200-seat plane, not a 50-seat plane. You can go forward.
Just a quick question. 2009, you use that as the compare date there. Is that a pretty normative year?
Can you go back? I'm sorry.
So the more seats, fewer departures. I mean, that's a, that's a pretty telling statistic there between the more seats and the less departures. 2009 was the recession, so I don't know, is that, is that a pretty normative year?
It was, you know what, in any of these stats and reports, they pick a number, so I pulled the number from there. But the, if you go to the next, next slide, you know, this is what we know about regional air service, and that is, since 2019, you've got 320 airports with fewer service, with less service, and 16 have closed completely. They don't have any commercial service, so Williamsport, Pennsylvania has no commercial air service, and getting it back is very challenging. So, and the other thing I need to point out here is that, that since 2019, airports like Cleveland, Buffalo, and Pittsburgh have seen a loss of service from the legacy carriers. What's kept them, and employments up there, is ultra-low-cost carriers have gone in there. So you're seeing among regional jet service, and just so everyone understands, there's the big hubs, which we all know, which would be, obviously, Charlotte, Chicago, Philadelphia, Washington DC, Dallas, Minneapolis, Los Angeles, Denver. You, as a, can you go back, please? When you're, when you're flying, we fly to a hub, and then we fly to our end destination. So, so that is why, we'll never be a hub airport, we'll never even be a small hub airport. Cleveland or Pittsburgh might be a small hub airport. So we have bigger planes, and what you're going to see in a market like Erie, which is not a bad thing, it's actually a very good thing, is you're going to see the 76-seaters, I mean, 50-seaters go away and 76-seaters replace them. That's just the industry, they're like, we don't want to be flying 50-seaters anymore, we need to make more, more money. And then the pilots, the pilots that were serving the regional airlines were getting pulled up, and I just want to give this context here. There's a lot of variables involved with the pilot thing, and we're not, we don't have an agenda on that. But I do know this, that a few years ago, when we were looking at the airport and finding out more, I can tell you that a regional jet pilot was making less than an EMTA driver by a pretty sizable amount. They make nothing until they hit their number of hours, then once they hit their hours of 1,500 certified hours in the air, then their pay starts to escalate rather rapidly. But they have to go into debt to go to school, then they have to go and get their hours in, and they're basically taken advantage of during that time, but once they hit their number, then their, their salary really jumps. So, next one. So here are the best prospects, you know, looking at who is dependent on regional jet service to feed into their airports. These airports right here have over 50% of their departures to places like Erie. And all of those are good options for us, and by the way, that's not the only options, there are the other options, and at the end of the day, it's the airlines that will decide who we're going to fly to, based upon what they know about our market and where they feel they have access and can make us fit in. So, next one. So what do we know about Erie's situation? There was a third flight to Charlotte for a period of time, we're finding out about the continuation of that third flight. So we have twice daily on a 50-seat to Charlotte. We know that we're losing over 250,000 passengers to Buffalo, Cleveland, and Pittsburgh right now, in a, in a calendar year where we only have that one flight, and we've always had a high historical leakage. Even in our best years, we were still losing 30 to 40% of our passengers to those other airports. And then the airport doesn't receive any operational support from the city, the county, the state, or the feds. There is capital, there is federal funding support for capital improvements, runway extension, terminal improvements, equipment, et cetera, but not operationally. So as we get into this, I want to just kind of take you into this, and again, I'll move through this as quickly as I can, but airlines are tenants at Erie, you know, they're a tenant there, and as a tenant, they pay fees to utilize the airport, to basically have the opportunity to get the business of our citizens in our community. So they pay landing fees, fuel flowage fees, they pay kiosk rent out front, they pay office rent, and they pay common area rent and security. And when you bundle all of those costs together, what the airport's charging them, whatever the rate is, you add that together, and then they divide it by how many people got on my, on my plane in, in a year, and that determines their cost per employment. So the example I have up here, and this is not, but if, if we were charging American for those twice-daily flights $650,000 out of all of those costs, and they had 30,000 employments, their CPE would be $21.67, a cost per in-plane passenger, that's what they're paying to serve a Erie. So if you go to the next slide, so why is it so important? Because the higher your CPE is, the less competitive your airport is, and what that means is that airline doesn't make as much money. So the example I used here, and it's just, it's made up, kind of made up, let's just say it's made up, 21.67 is Erie's CPE, Dayton's is 10. So the cost differential is $11.67, times 30,000 passengers, that's $350,000. So if they took the plane flying from Erie to, or from, United took the plane flying from Erie to Chicago, and took that same plane and went to Dayton, and Dayton said, we're going to fly it direct to Denver, or wherever it might be, they're going to make $350,000 more, and they're not changing the pilot, they're not changing the crew, and they're not changing the plane. So that's what we believe led to United leaving the market. I mean, it's just pretty practically unplugged. Everyone's like, what was the reasoning? And as we dug in more, we've learned, if you go to the next slide, it's our CPE. Our cost per in-plane passenger at the airport is one of the highest in the country. And there, there's a variety of reasons for that, but the biggest one is, is that, as you can see on the slide up there, as your number of employments goes up, look at 2017, you have 85,000 passengers, and in 2019, you have 106,000 passengers, and your CPE goes from 26 down to 19. It's, it's the math, it's the numerator remains relatively the same, the denominator's, the passengers, that changes, that will drive your CPE down. So the lesson out of this is, the more people flying through the airport, the better. That's number one. And number two, and the one thing I do want to point out that gets a little bit lost is, some might say, well, then just, you know, you just have to cut the budget at the airport. The airport's budget is about $3.1 million, and they've cut it from over four. So, and if you've been to the airport, you know, there, it's not a, it's not a, a business that's running with a lot of fat, it's very to the bone. So I don't think that there's much to be found there from the standpoint of cost savings at the airport operationally. So what we have to do is, we have to drive the passenger employments up. And, and so the other thing I would point out is that these, you know, they were doing this to balance a budget, right? There is no operational support coming from the private, public sector, so they have to generate it through the airlines. And so in essence, the, the CPE was high, and the airports, the airlines were keeping us afloat, a balanced budget. So just a quick slide on United, America, and Delta, just want to make sure those are what we call the legacy carriers. You know, when we, when I grew up, there was tons of different airlines, and they've really consolidated, these three, these three dominate the market, and they dominate daily air service to all parts of the United States. The next category would be like Southwest, who flies a ton of daily flights, they're kind of in their own category, they're not really considered an ultra-low-cost carrier. And then you get into low-cost carriers, which would be the next slide, that's Spirit, Frontier, Legion, Avelo, JetBlue, Sun Country, et cetera. And these are businesses that work in a different model. The planes are predominantly bigger, they offer very attractive round-trip fares, and then they, then you pay fee for service. You want your own seat, you want to pick it, you pay for it. If you want to board first, you're going to pay for it, you're going to pay even for maybe a carry-on on those flights, and then, so if you really, if you can just throw on flip-flops and some shorts and a t-shirt, and a backpack you can hop on and fly down to Florida or wherever, pretty cheaply. But if you're going with a family, you're going to pay some extra fees. But they have been the savior for a lot of airports around the country, not saviors too strongly, they have been a cost assist, and the airlines know it's a cost assist. So we talked with the airlines, we'll talk about that, and they don't have any issue with the ultra-low-cost carriers, because in many cases, the customer that is looking at that and flying those airlines is not necessarily a regular customer that they're pursuing. So you have the, the legacy carriers, which are critical for business travel and for connectivity to the entire country. The low-cost carriers meet a particular niche to get to select markets for families and for business, but predominantly for leisure travelers. So our goals for, when we got into this, was like, we need to increase the airlines, the seat volume, the route options, and the daily, weekly flight options. We set a goal to say, we want to drive that CPE to under $7, through subsidizing lower operating costs through the reserve at the airport in the short term, and then accomplishing goal one, which is more seats, more passengers, and we'll show you how that can be done. We want to maximize the seats that we do have by getting Erie folks to look and choose Erie before they make the decision to go to the surrounding airports. And then we want to help ERAA build a financially stable operation, so that, so it's not like, we're not up and down, we're consistently known as a very cost-effective place to do business in. So the projections I'm going to show you, I went through and gave you an overview of what CPE is, there's another piece in here called a passenger facility charge, and every time you board a plane, if you do it on orbits or whatever, and you click on the thing, and you look at the taxes paid, there'll be a passenger facility charge. It varies depending on market, but you really can't, I think the federal max is $4.50, and the airport is required by law, by federal law, that $4.50 has to go into a restricted account at the airport for capital improvements. So when the feds come in and do, when they did the airport runway extension, if it's an $80 million project, we still have to come up with 10% of that project, so that's $8 million bucks. The passenger facility charge is to help the airport build up a reserve so it can provide that 10% match. So in the following slides, you'll see things in red, those are bad, green's good, and blue is a change in the air service, and you'll see it, it'll be pretty straightforward. The, the key variables to accomplishing the goals that we had on that previous slide is, it's important for you to understand that the airport does have an incentive program for ultra-low-cost carriers. So if an ultra-low-cost carrier specifically, I believe, comes into the market and says they're going to service Florida, the airport would provide them access and use of our airport for the first two years at zero CPE. And you might say, well, that seems pretty luxurious, but it is a common practice around the country. For the low-cost carrier, they have to come in and prove the market, so they come in, they get their first two years subsidized through the airport authorities' incentive program. So far, we haven't had anyone bite into that apple. For a legacy carrier, if a carrier comes in and starts servicing a market that they had not previously served, then they would be entitled to one-year CPE. Now, so an example of where it would work and where it wouldn't. If United came back into the market, said, we're going to service Chicago, they don't get it, they were servicing Chicago. If American comes in and says, well, you know, we're going to service Chicago, they would get it. So it's, it's dependent on history, and it's dependent on where they come in. So both of them hooks them into the market, gives them a chance to prove that Erie can work for them. And what it does for the airport in the short term is, the airport, in addition to the fees it charges to the airlines, it makes money off of parking, it makes money off of rental cars and a cost-share arrangement there, and a few other revenue streams. So any, again, this comes back to, when our passenger load goes too low, they can't even charge the minimum, the minimum revenue guarantees from those entities, their, their revenue takes a big hit. So they have to have, all actions always good for the airport. The more people flying out of the airport is good for their business, it's good for the carrier, so we all have a, and then we get more options. The next item here is the reserve fund at the airport. When we got into this and dug into it, we did find out that the airport has about a $10.5 million operating reserve, and the preponderance of those dollars came during the pandemic, when the feds agreed to reimburse airports for their expenses. The airport did operate for two years and ran its operation to the tune of about $3, $3.1 million, and submitted all of their expenses to the feds, and the feds reimbursed them 100%. We, so that was for two years in a row, so they did have a reserve, but the reserve popped up because the feds, because of the federal program. We have looked into it, and as long as the, as long as those dollars are utilized for the operations of the airport, it's 100% eligible use. So we looked at that, and candidly, what we said to them was, there is no way we could raise dime one from the public or private sector unless you're committed to, to, you know, this money, and I think this is a very important point, the Fly Erie Fund and what we're looking to do, none of that money goes to the operations of the airport. There's not, there is no need for it to go there, nor do I think it is an incentive for them. If, you'll see on the projections, they're going to lose money in 2024. That money's coming out of their reserve, it's not coming from a Fly Erie Fund of public and private money. And they, they understand that, know that, and we'll show you how they've already taken the first step in that process. So, so that's the second one. The third one is the creation of the private, the Fly Erie Fund, with a private sector commitment of $750,000 over three years, and the chamber is leading the effort to raise that. And then the public sector commitment, where part of what we're here today is, and we've talked to the mayor as well, is for the city to consider participating in that. And again, it's $250,000 a year with a number of different parties from the public sector participating, just as it would be from the private sector. So what would the fund be used for? It would be used to market and drive people to use the airport, which we haven't done in some time. It would be used for CPE subsidies, that would not be to the airport, it would be to the airlines, and we'll give you an example of that. Potentially for revenue guarantees, which is a common practice around the country, and legal costs. So the, the, maybe the next slide we can go to. So it would be a single entity, the Fly Erie Fund would be a single entity LLC at the, the chamber, it would be comprised of major investors, and it would be negotiating with the airlines. So we would never talk to an airline without the airport alongside us. But if they start getting to a point where they say, you know, we're thinking about bringing service, you know, to Erie, or we get in and we make, we're able to make the pitch, and they see what the cost is to operate out of the airport, and then they say, you know, we're interested, but we're going to need some support, some backup on that, that's where the Fly Erie Fund would come in. And we'll give you an example of how that could play in. So I want to be very clear, we're working in partnership with the airport, but on the Fly Erie Fund, they'd have no directional control over how the dollars were invested or spent, they would be a partner there, but the airport, and I think, again, this is important to point out, the airport cannot negotiate different terms with airlines. So whatever they're charging is a fuel flowage fee, or a landing fee, or a rent, they have to charge the same rate to everyone, even the low-cost carriers, they cannot negotiate a separate rate. So the, the only exception to that is the incentive programs, which again, are spelled out at the federal level. They can do it for a period of time, but they can't do it for an extended period of time. So, and we would provide all of the staffing support for this at no cost. So, and then, marketing, and so we have to, we have to get the airport in utilizing Erie at the top of people's minds, and we've talked about that before. And, and I also think it's really important, from the standpoint of being, you know, the city's leaders, and, and us from the business community and the community leaders, but across the board, all of us have to, we may have an issue, we may have questions, we may have frustrations, the key is for us to talk about that and have an open-door policy with one another about what's going on. Media stories about people fighting about this is not going to help us get any service. I mean, that's, that's, it's true in any business, they don't like to go to a place where there's discord. So it doesn't mean that the questions and the issues aren't real, but we, we just have to be cognizant that as we go forward, let's try to do it as much as we can, not necessarily behind closed doors, but quietly and respectfully, and really try to get to the answers that are at stake. Okay, so here's, here's the, here's the projections that we worked with the airport on, and I will say, both Derek Martin and Jim Pakanski, incredibly forthcoming, honest, and very thorough. They know this business inside and out, they know the operations there, so they didn't inflate anything here. So just to give some perspective on this first one, and then we can move through the others. We have 100 seats daily flying out of Erie, so there's 365 days in a year, that means you have a maximum capacity of 36,500 seats. So their projection was that in 2024, if nothing changed, we'd probably have about 29,116 employments. What's that based on? Not every plane takes off, there's cancellations, not every seat is sold. So 80% is a very fair number, right now, the airport is filling 94% of the seats that they have available. And I think that's for 2023, they're 94%. So when we go through this, as I said, if you look at American's CPE there, that number is what American was told they would be charged for continuing their service in Erie. So as you saw on a previous slide, it was over 20. So the airport lowered it because they wanted to get the contract extended here, that contract has been signed, so there will be service by American in the market for the next two years. So where does that $7, $8 of subs, you know, of, you know, cost reduction come from? It comes from the reserve at the airport. That's why you're seeing the, the income and operating loss of 1.3 million. They're not going to get as much money from the airlines, they're not going to get as much money from parking, they're not going to get as much money from rental cars. If all we do is employ 29,000 people, there is no public or private subsidy, and then the PFC revenue, that's, that 131,000 you see, that's good, but that is the $4.50 times the 29,000 employments. So that's present state. Okay, let's go to the next year. What if we get to a 76-seat passenger jet instead of a 50-seater? And we're using Avelo, because there's been discussions with Avelo Airlines of doing four times weekly to Florida to two destinations. It's basically flying down to Fort Myers on a Tuesday and on a Friday, and flying down on, you know, that same Tuesday to Orlando, and then, you know, and then again on Friday. That's, that's the thing about the low-cost carriers, if you know people down there, it's pretty sweet, because you can fly down and fly back, but their schedule's more inconsistent. What that does for us is, number one is, if we're just twice daily, we go from a 50-seater, which is 100 seats a day, to 152 seats, which is twice daily on a 76-seater. So American's total, you know, available seats goes up by 50%. And then you, so you see, and if you can go back once, Renee, thank you, you can see, you got 29,000, now you go forward, and you're up to 77,000. Those aren't unrealistic projections, we're not saying it's going to happen, we're trying to show a pathway of how we can get to a point of self-sufficiency. Both of those are realistic, based on what we know is going on in the market. What we heard from American when we talked to them is that the probability is, is that before they would go to a new market, like open up Philadelphia for us, or some other major hub where we could fly, they want to, they really want to dig in deeper on this third flight, and making it more of a permanent thing to see, are you going to support three flights? And three flights is not, on a 50-seater is not bad, it gets you pretty close to the 76-seater. The three-fliter, the advantage there is it gives you more schedule options, you have one leaving in the morning, and one leaving around noon, and then one leaving in the afternoon, it gives people an option to interconnect and get back to Erie and get out of Erie. But what you can see what this does is, is that we're still not where we need to be on employments, but the operating loss at the airport does go down, so they have definitely a vested interest in, you know, getting more airlines here.
Any, any particular reason why you use a different seat capacity utilization rate for this one than the last one?
It was, it was, yeah, it was the, it's just projection from the airport, it's based upon past history, so I think the 84%, and again, Jim, James Pakanski was pretty clear about it, he goes, I, I've been taking a guess on Avelo because they've never serviced us. So I'm, I'm putting in what, you know, from what they say happens in a market like this.
Yeah, the ultra-low-cost carriers do a higher, a higher capacity.
They have a 180-seat plane, so they really have to, they have to fill it, and that's part of where, you know, the Fly Erie Fund comes in, is they want to come, and if we help market the flights and the availability, that's in our best interest, right? Get, get people onto those planes, because that's going to help our, our market. The, the thing I want to point out is, is that by increasing the employments for American, their CPE does just, it goes down, right? It goes from over 14, it goes down to 11. So their reserve takes a hit, we do get more passenger facility charge revenue into the airport, all good stuff. So let's So let's project to 2025. And in this one, what we're, the, the big change here is we're saying, you know, Americans still flying to Charlotte on a 76-seater. That assumption's still there, and Avelo's still doing the same thing. But what we're going to do is we're going to add in, we're going to add in a new hub. And we're going to just assume, worst-case scenario, that it's not a hub we had before, so the legacy carrier's going to get it at zero. So you, the employments went from 77,000 up to 121,000. So it does help the operating income and loss. And it, the, the, just for clarification, when I first did this, I, the 782, the reason that goes down on American from 11 is because, um, I just assumed it would be American going to a new hub at zero. So they'd be flying to Chicago. That's another type of finding in my thing. So, but the big numbers here that we want to look at are the employments are getting up there where we need them to be. The operating loss is coming down, and the passenger facility charge revenue is going up. So remember, 2024, Avelo got their first year free. 2025, the legacy gets it free for one year. Avelo gets it free for one year. So when you go to 2026, now everyone's paying. And so the legacy carriers cost the two, you know, going to two different destinations twice daily, they're going to be under that $7 range. Avelo, because they won't have as many passengers, now is paying us, but they're paying us at $10.92 a CPE. So now the, the operating loss for the airport gets down to 100,000. The PFC goes up, but there's a public subsidy on this one. So if you can go to the next page, I'll show you why. So for, for this example, we're assuming that Avelo's going to need a CPE of six bucks. So as I said, they have to charge the same piece to everyone. So in this particular case, based on their employments, Avelo's going to pay $10.92. So where the Fly Erie Fund would come in is, okay, your cost at the airport, we know, and the airport's with us saying, it's going to be $10.92. And Avelo says, hey, we have to be at $6 CPE, or we can't continue to operate there. That's where an agreement would be drawn up between the Fly Erie Fund and Avelo, and saying, every month you send, you give us your employments for that market, and we'll pay you $4.92 back to you. It'll be a reimbursement for the flights that you had. So when you do the, the total number, it ends up being $164,000 that they would be paying. So, um, so that's that year. Now, if we go forward, and Avelo's like, this is a great market, we like it, we're still just flying, say, just for, you know, we're flying to Charlotte twice a day, and say we're flying to Chicago twice a day. We're under seven for the legacies. Avelo's under seven, but Avelo still needs 71 cents. They need to get to six bucks. And so there is a small subsidy that's being paid from the Fly Erie Fund. Now, what we've done here to show that we can get to, the airport's making, they're making money at the airport. The PFC revenue is up. This is a sustainable model as long as we continue to market it to the market, or to Erie, and people use the airport. What else happens in this? We got more flights coming in here, more options. Price should see that pressure, and prices should start to be more competitive across the board. So is this, if you can go back real quick, this is not far off from where we were as, late as probably 2018. The only difference would be is that the, the employments has to be driven by, it has to be good markets, good prices. We have to get people using the airport. So what have we done? Uh, if you can go to the next one. First thing was, we have to make sure we hold on to American, and they've been fantastic to work with. Very positive, very, um, very honest and candid. And their CPEs there, so they're locked in for the two years, and we're talking to them about a third flight and potentially another hub. We know that we have to get in front of the airlines and in front of them to talk to them candidly about what's been done. They were working with this company, Ale Beyond Pacific. We, I don't know if, we believe that they've extended their contract. We need someone who is an insider who can get to the nitty-gritty. They've already proven that. We have had the Chamber, Tim Nacastro from Erie Insurance, the airport and their consultant. We've had direct contact with United, Delta, and American. And it's probably not here, but I can talk about that in a second, what we learned through that, the third step. Create the Fly Erie Fund, that's in process. Okay, the next one, and I've talked what it would be used for. Talking to both Avelo and other ultra-low-cost carriers. It's a competitive market out there for the ultra-low-cost carriers. So we, we have to be talking with them, but, uh, that's part of what the Fly Erie Fund is, is needed for, is to show them that the community's standing behind this, and whatever they're saying they can do, they, in all likelihood, can do it. The next one, uh, will be creating a Fly Erie outreach team. That really will be working in concert with the consultant at the airport. We are in the process of doing, I think, unprecedented research involving, uh, the travelers to and from the airport. It's a, uh, effort involving a number of different parties here in town. It's a consultant, consulting firm that's been working with Erie Insurance, and Erie Insurance recognized that we have to change some behaviors, and we've got to find out to change those behaviors, what are the driving variables affecting people? So, uh, through their support, we are working with Gannon, Erie Insurance, uh, the Airport Authority, and a company out of Atlanta called Harmonic Design. And we've already been in Erie, talking to passengers, getting on the planes and off of planes, uh, to find out what is driving them. I know I was at the airport with the students and with the consultants at 4:45 a couple of weeks ago, talking to people. They're very pleasant at 4:45, I have to say, or 5:00 in the AM, 5:00 AM in the morning. They're not as pleasant when they're getting off a plane at 10:40 after traveling all day. But honestly, the people were fantastic. So we got direct input there, and then we gathered names up, and then they've done, I believe, 21 intensive, like hour, hour and a half, interviews with a wide array of people with differing travel backgrounds. And then they're doing a lot of data dives, and, and really, this comes into, this is, this is really going to drive, like, what are the variables that matter the most? What can you tweak? And it goes into both physical plant stuff, as well as how, you know, it will inform our marketing and get us to better understand when we're talking to the airlines, what are the variables that we have to try to manipulate with the airlines to make our customers the happiest? So, uh, I don't know what the next slide is. Yeah, so this is what we found out from our calls. As I mentioned, American wants a third daily flight, proof kind of that the market's viable, and then they'll be looking. And, you know, again, these are all preliminary. We're not trying to put American on any kind of line, but it could be Philadelphia, it could be Dallas. It's really, you know, a combination of what data we can put in front of them to help them better understand. But it really comes down to us utilizing what we have. That's the first step. United is looking to fill, uh, a, a big plane order that they're going to have in the next 24 months. So regional air service to their hubs is one of their priorities. So we could see a return, uh, of some service by United in '24, '25. The door was open there. Delta, however, the door was not, not open. Their, their business model is not focused on regional service. That doesn't mean we'll stop talking to them. We'll continue to talk to them because things can change overnight. So the behavioral research is in process right now. And next, yep, these are the goals. And I'm sure I missed some stuff, and you can then open up to Q and A.
What was the employment style in '33?
Well, based on that projection, it would be, in '24, it'd be about 29,000.
How many would you say?
29,000.
So the goal's in four years to make this five times bigger?
Yeah, it's not, the interesting thing is, I understand people would be suspect of that, but we were at 187,000 back in the mid 2000s. And back then, it was, you could still fly and have open seats. And right now, for anyone who's flown it, like, I can give you my experience of the last three, four years, there's really no open seats on any flight, anywhere, right? So, um, we had a lot more service then. I mean, we probably had, ew, 12 daily flights back then? It was, I can get the number, but it was, there was a lot. So this is a combo of, uh, they're going to be bigger, probably bigger. We're basing on bigger planes, and we're basing it on the fact that seat availability, um, because route availability is down. So, um, that's what's driving people to fly. That's what's driving the percentage up.
And that's where the number becomes financially viable to continue at the kind of rates that you're looking at for CP's, is once you get to that 155,000 number.
And, and, and here's the thing. It's like, we haven't put a, a finish line on this. I mean, obviously, there's a big reserve at the airport. We want them to hold on to as much of that as they can, but they know that they have to keep their costs competitive. So as I said, we want the service because it's important to the community for a variety of reasons. And so we're interested in, it's, it affects so many different things. I mean, there's, uh, at least 800 international students that, you know, travel here to go to Gannon. There's students from around the country that travel here to go to LECOM. There are obviously business people that come in to go to a variety of businesses, both people who work for a company like Erie's Magnetics, or Webtech, or even Erie Insurance that need to get here, conferences, sporting events, all of those. I know, is Katie, are, yeah, Katie's here. And I've seen the numbers on, you know, refugee resettlement and getting folks into Erie. There's, and the other side of it is, is that we have seen an interesting thing, which is, um, leisure travelers, based on data that these students generated, leisure travelers outnumber business travelers, and that wasn't always the case. There's a lot more, uh, folks traveling for vacations and, and I know a lot of younger professionals, that's their, their buzz. They're going to put off, you know, owning a home to go vacation or go check out a place or remotely work. There's just a tremendous, I mean, I even think about the remote work with Avelo. I mean, there's nothing to keep somebody in the middle of February to say, I'm hopping on that plane and going to Florida, and I'm going to work down there for a week and stay with my aunt or my brother, my cousin, and then I'm going to come back. So we live in a totally different world, and that's one of the things that's been, not frustrating, it's just we've had the kind of, the, the lessons that a lot of our, uh, people who know the airline service are from 1990. They're from 2000. And the industry's so different today. And it really, and the traveler is so different. So, anyway.
Do the consultants you're working with have examples of airports that have increased their employments by five times in four years?
I think that, I, I don't think that our consultants are working with too many that have gotten as low as we have. And we're not, uh, we're not a massive airport, but we don't have any debt. And our physical plant is 100% where it needs to be. Well, all right, maybe not 100%, but we're not staring at what we were 20 years ago, which was, we were flying under a safety waiver. We didn't have the right instrumentation, so if the plane was coming in, and they, they, you know, couldn't see what was going on, there was no ability to kind of communicate to them. So a lot of flights did get canceled back then. So, um, yeah, I totally get this suspicion. However, if, if, if you just put, um, if you just put United back into the mix here, based on the employments that they were doing, we would be, you know, based on, and again, that, that's a projection for next year, but we would be over 60,000, so it would be over doubling it, but it would be five times.
So you had mentioned a comment about how people travel through Buffalo and Cleveland Airport because it's cheaper, pretty much. How are we going to get those individuals who are saving money to use the Erie Airport other than literally subsidize all of the missing money that they need to be able to?
Well, the, the, preliminarily, what we've heard, and again, it's, it's going to change as you get more, so people who are flying right now, so with just being completely transparent on the, the research, people who are flying in and out of Erie right now are doing it almost exclusively because of convenience. They love flying into Erie, and they like, you know, flying out of Erie. And so, but when you're at 94% of your seat utilization, and you have that many people leaving, we also have gotten a lot of feedback that, specifically from the business community that is not as price-sensitive. They're price-sensitive, but they're really time-sensitive. They would fly out of Erie. The problem is, is it's, it's the scheduled availability. So, um, the reality is, is that as we add more flights, this is where we get into the market. We have to make people understand what the, you know, what, what the options are there, and really get them to look and check out Erie before they default to going. So there's going to be fares that we just can't compete with, right? I mean, if you need to get to New York City, you go to Buffalo. I mean, until we get a flight to, say, Newark, you, you go to Buffalo. I mean, it doesn't make sense to fly to Charlotte and then fly to New York, you know? I mean, you might get a good fare, but then you're adding on a chunk of time. So there's certain markets, JetBlue to Boston, you're going to fly probably out of Buffalo. So there's just certain markets where those ultra-low-cost carriers make more sense in those markets. So it really comes down to what your end destination is. And, and then it's about options, viability of options to get there.
So, uh, who's going to take the lead on the marketing? Is that going to be the Chamber? Or is that going to be a shared, um, role with the Chamber and the airport? Because I know that the airport has, um, their own firm, but I haven't seen anything really, uh, positive out of the firm that they've hired in to, you know, that's impacting either, either the image or, uh, to entice people to fly out of Erie.
Yeah. The, what I would say is, is that as far as the airport's dollars being paired with the Fly Erie Fund and marketing, that's not a conversation we've had yet. We want to dig in deeper to find out what kind of work they're doing for the airport, and maybe that continues for them. We want to raise the fund first. We haven't put parameters around the marketing, but it's obviously something that we would contract with someone to, we'd have to build out and work with a group to build out kind of the plan for it, and then figure out what is the most cost-effective way to, to move forward. So we're not at that stage yet, but I, I, I know that the airport does use a, a firm, and I'm with you on that. I don't know exactly what, you know, what kind of marketing they do presently, so.
We're very fortunate. This year, we increased people, tourism coming into Erie because we increased the area that we were attacking. So that part of it's going to be very good for us, if our folks know. I would like to Cleveland because I hate Chicago. How many times you got to sit there and wait to get on a plane? I'll go to Cleveland, fly in Minnesota to see my son. When Delta was here.
But if we get, but if we got Delta direct to Minneapolis, then you'd probably fly out of Erie. Yeah.
You can do that. I'm with you. You're saying that direct flights are a big part of it.
And, and again, that, you know, we've said, you know, that is a big thing. People, well, some people won't deal. They want to go direct and be done. Others will deal with one hop, but they won't deal with the two. So they'll fly to Charlotte because they can hop on a plane. But, um, we ran into a couple, and they were, at the airport, and they were flying to Punta Cana. It was Erie to Charlotte to Punta Cana, and the rest of their crew was flying out of Toronto. And like, I don't know why you'd do that. And it wasn't that much more expensive to, to fly out of Erie. So it does take a little bit of homework and research, and it's, I mean, I do it a lot.
I have a lot of questions. I'm not going to have all of them for right now, but I'm very curious, given that I, I lived outside of Erie for 13 years, so I was constantly traveling back here, whether I was living internationally in London, or in Denver, or in San Francisco. I was living internationally in London or in Denver or in San Francisco. So well versed with what all of our pathways were. But my first question is, what is the plan with other municipalities to have this same conversation and meeting? That's my first question.
Yeah, and I would say that we don't need, I, I'm not remotely looking for any kind of commitment or answer right now, but obviously before, we needed to talk to the city before we talked to Mill Creek, to Summit, to Harbor Creek, which we will. We believe that there's a shared responsibility among everybody because it is the region's airport. It doesn't mean everybody's share will be the same. I mean, but I think that we have to go through this and explain it as deeply as we just did and, and see what they're willing to put forward. So that's the game plan right now.
Okay, so talking to the city was the priority before talking to county leadership?
We've, we've shared the early iterations of this. We have talked to Brian Schenk from County Council and we're trying to schedule a meeting with Brian. Right, with the whole of council. And this version, we haven't had the chance to sit down with the county executive and Joe Sinnett, but Joe saw an earlier version of this. We've continued to fine tune it to make sure it's, it's accurate. We did present to the Erie County Gaming Revenue Authority. And just thinking of any other public entity that we presented to, I think that's it at this stage.
Okay, and so when you say public entity commitment, the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, is that something, like what is the timeline essentially on that? Because I'm thinking of all of the, you know, there's a lot of infrastructure grants and things out there that wouldn't necessarily be like a budget line item for the Fly Erie Fund, but what sort of timeline are you working on for that commitment?
That one, I would say it's, it's flexible. So let's just say that the city was committed to putting fifty thousand dollars in a year for three years, so a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If the, if, if the money could be put up front, great. If, if it was, we can do fifty a year, great. If it was, we're committed to the hundred and fifty, we got to figure out, but we can't do it this year because we've already, we're too far into the budget process, but we might be able to do seventy-five and, and, you know, and we recognize that we want to get it on the radar screen and figure out how to get a number programmed in. So that's, and if somebody said, hey, we, we had a good year here, we'll put it in right now and be done for the next three years, that's fine.
Okay, and the last question for now is, I'm curious why you didn't include in the presentation all of the federal investments over the last two years into the airport? So just from a quick Google search, there's been nineteen million, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seventy-one dollars in federal investments. I know that's not operating expenses, but with Infrastructure Act and nineteen million dollars coming in, I see that as something where if I wasn't wearing this hat, that's something that is enticing for Erie Airport, given that there have been all of these recent federal investments. So I'm just wondering.
That's a very good point. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm wondering your methodology on not including that.
There, there was, because we were really focused on operational aspects, since we're not making an ask for capital improvement dollars. But with that said, that's a very good point and they have them well, I mean, I can get the list from them and I think it's worthy of, of checking those boxes and not assuming that an airline knows them. The, the intriguing thing is, is, as, as big as the airlines are, the number of airports they're servicing, you know, is, you know, the, you know, it's funny, it's like, in essence, our airport has three customers it has to continually talk to, right? United, American and Delta. And now some, some smaller airports and, and they, they all know, I mean, they know, but what we have to do is make sure, instead of assuming they know what we've put into the airport, we have to put it in front of them and also capturing data on where, where are people flying to and figuring out a way to do that in real time. So one of the things that we're intrigued by is how do we capture, you know, there's a lot of ideas out there, like, first of all, how do we do things that celebrate and bring us together as a community where, hey, if you fly out of Erie and you take your, and again, there could be legal issues on this, this is just me spitballing, but you take your boarding pass and when you're leaving the airport because you flew into Erie or you flew out of Erie, you, you put it in, there's a, you know, you put it into, into a, a box and there's a drawing every month to, you know, that goes to the person who's pulled out of that for flying out of Erie. There's that kind of stuff, but we equally want to find out, hey, you didn't fly out of Erie, where'd you fly to? And how frequently do you fly? Getting that data, because one of the things, as an international traveler, you would know, the tickets aren't as cheap as maybe going to Erie to Chicago or to Charlotte. And international travel is very interesting to, they, they want to know what, what's been generated out of this market and where is it going? So if, if a family or a group of friends is traveling to Egypt, we want them to book that flight through Erie because that, that helps build our kind of reputation and it shows the airlines what's happening in the market.
I know from personal experience, my family goes to Mexico yearly or bi-yearly and they definitely don't fly out of Erie. So there's a lot of first generation families that go back yearly and they're not flying out of Erie.
Yeah.
So I wouldn't be surprised if there's a lot of first generation families that are flying back home, but aren't doing it from Erie.
Yeah.
Whether it's from Mexico, Egypt or wherever the place may be, they're definitely going home, that's just Erie that's making the money.
No question about it. And, and we're making even fewer of those because we have less options right now. So, you know, this is a situation where we can increase the flights, but we have to get, you know, then we have to fill those seats and I, you know, I mean, call me a dreamer or whatever, but I'd love to get to the point where we have enough flight options here that people are, you know, we're pulling in from outside and, you know, getting people to look at Erie rather than going to Cleveland or Buffalo from a fifty to sixty, seventy mile radius. I think that would be really neat.
I think, if I could just throw in very quickly, everything we were talking about, every example, every scenario, every question, you know, how are we going to do this five times larger in four years? All of those things are component parts, right? So there's no panacea, like there's no magic pill, there's no blue-red pill, right? It's, it's all of these pieces coming together, doing the marketing to get those folks that are, we call the leakage, out to the other airports in the region. Getting that family to consider, getting your family to consider, because we're making enhancements at the airport, we're looking for more options. It's one of those things where you, is it the chicken or the egg, right? You got to have more people wanting the flights, but then you have to have the flights available. So it's that working together and again, all the component parts coming together, the public, the private. You know, you asked about when would all the investment have to be upfront or in pieces? Some of this is really, if we can have verifiable evidence to the airlines and commitments, that's all they need because they're going to, they're going to trust those commitments when we can move forward even without the money upfront at times. So again, there's a lot of nuance, a lot of component parts. The biggest thing for me, and this may be a point of privilege of, we just have to do this well together and work together on it, right? No one has all the answers, there's no one way. It's really having these kinds of sessions. And then honestly, the last thing I'll say is, we have to tell our story better, right? We need to know what families are looking to do, what people are doing, what demographics, whether it be, you know, new Americans coming in or, or, or international students. We don't tell a collective story that is a great and a large story. We tell it in pieces and we don't really get very far. So I think this is an opportunity to really, to do that, to tell a great Erie story and to make, make some good things happen.
Yeah, I mean, and, and just to clarify, as the report, we don't envision that any level of direct subsidy to an airline is going to happen in twenty twenty-four. And so that first year of funding, and again, we're not looking to spend the money just to spend the money. I mean, it's one point five million over three years. I'm confident we could stretch that, you know, to five years of, you know, resources to be able to use and depending on what we do, but we are going to need some money to start building out that marketing campaign and starting to get into people's, you know, top of mind and start changing the, the way we look at things.
In relation to that too, just looked at some information and the airport currently does not have a firm they're doing marketing with. So that's, I'm not sure how new that is, but at one point they were, but they aren't now.
What's the relationship with this plan and visit Erie?
Visit Erie's, but we, we spoke with their board.
Okay.
They're definitely supportive. They totally understand the need for it. I mean, I, I was at a conference in Biloxi, a national conference, and I never would have thought that we could host that conference. And I went to Biloxi and I saw the facilities that they have there and I saw their setup and I'm not knocking Biloxi, but I said, if they can host this conference here, and it wasn't easy to get there. A lot of people were flying into New Orleans and driving over. And I, I just said, you know, if they could host this conference here, I'm, it empowered me to say, we could host that conference. And the only thing that would hold, holding it back is the flight accessibility. So that's, that's a big thing. And I think some of the sporting events that we're hosting in the region, that's the one thing that visit Erie was pretty straightforward about. They're like, look, you know, we kind of pull from this geographic area and people drive here, but conferences and, and trade shows, or, you know, conferences, sporting events, rather, I'm sorry, sporting events.
I'm not, so as far as, you know, you're talking about being able to figure out where everyone's flying from, maybe Mercyhurst, some kind of partnership with their intelligence apparatus where they're mapping all the planes that are going certain places that they may be able to be a resource. I can't say for sure, but to, you know, if you know how many people are getting on a plane, you know, and they know where the planes are going, that you might be able to come up with some way to quantify it.
Absolutely. We will talk with them and then the other is, what, what does the, you know, some of these, some of their, there's industry databases that we don't have access to where they are tracking by zip code of the billing address of where the flight is generated. So the, the, the key thing here, and that, that this is a hard one to kind of nail down, but the reason we want to get a feel for these, the totality of where people are flying is because if Americans getting you flying out of, or if United's getting you flying out of Cleveland, then we're like, well, we're getting them anyways. But if you show them a market that they're not getting, and, and it's a higher priced market that's actually going somewhere else and they're losing that, that's, that's what will entice them to say, hey, if there's that much traffic going to Mexico or if there's that much traffic going to Europe and we're, we're not getting much of it, maybe if we start there, we could land it. So it's competition.
Do you think investing in one of those databases is a possibility, like in the next quarter or two?
It's, it is possible, you know, but, but at the same, you know, I got to know how to, you know, we need to know how to use it, but if we, but again, that's where you talk to somebody at Mercyhurst and how can we, you know, they would have the expertise and the skill to do it. So we're open to any of those types of partnerships. Thank you, thank you all for, for listening, I appreciate it.